I'm calling the meeting to order. And we had a motion from John Randlett to go into non-public under RSA 91A colon 3 Roman numeral 2 A and C, personnel and reputation. And we have a second by Neil, just beat Mary Ann by a hair. And by roll call, Neil, what's your your vote?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
And Bill, aye. Okay, we're now in non-public. All right.
I moved that we we move out of non-public.
All right, Neil moves. Zach seconds. Neil, what's your vote?
Aye.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Zach?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Bill, aye. Okay. Back in the work session. And there's nothing else to do. So. Actually.
Where's the door?
Somebody's here.
Oh, because you came out of non-public. You're back.
We're back.
So take a one. Do you mind briefly talking about? Oh crap, am I locked up again?
No, you're there.
You heard it.
The other word, please.
So.
Yes, I know.
I was I was wondering if I might be able to talk about the John Gavoni not weed thing. Because John called me.
So that actually is non-public too because of.
We're not gonna get it. Yeah, I'm not gonna get into discussion.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, he had a concern because, you know, he. According to him, there was like 200 plants of not weed that that he pulled out personally along that stretch. That was redone. And when I went out there, all I saw was like these bass. Trees or bass bushes that were starting. And I felt that he was just mistaken. So. He, you know, encouraged me to go out there and he'd show me, which I did. And. Yeah, there's not weed all over the place. Which I hate. I mean, it's pretty disgusting that. There's so many that, you know, need to be controlled. So at some point, you know, we need to discuss a solution for.
Where is this?
Yeah, what is the background?
Bell Road.
Yeah, so it's the road. It's the road that got, you know, resurfaced and, you know. Culvers were replaced and the road was resurfaced with gravel and. And some of the material that that must have been laid down there had. Pieces of not weed and they all sprouted and and now we may have to deal with that. But.
We should we should get a hold of the New Hampshire DES right away. And ask them to give us some guidance on this.
Yeah, you know, I mean, we we give it a shot, but you know, the DES. Could look at millions of places in New Hampshire. And, you know, control is a big issue because. You know, it's either physical control or putting a carcinogen or. You know, onto it and dealing with it that way. Both effective, but one's more preferable.
It's very hard to uproot. The roots break off and they germinate. You know, that awful roundup stuff, you know. Seems to be the, if you can get it down into the roots, you spray it on the leaves when it's a fully mature plant before it goes to seed. And it'll go back down through the leaves into the roots and. Probably have to do that over about a five-year period to kill it.
Yeah. It's pretty depressing to see it up there, actually.
But it it's jungle plant, basically.
And anyway, it's something to be to be worked on, actually, because. You know, it may require going back with to the contractor or. I'm thinking maybe, you know, partnering with. PSU for that matter. If we have some fledgling conservation commission. Interns that might want to go out there and pull it, you know, year after year after year. Eventually, it'll be gone. But. So just so I'd spring that. What else? Oh. Maybe we can mention it during the regular meeting too, but you know. Jack Scarborough's passing. That was pretty bad.
Pretty quick.
Yeah.
He he has, they said six months to live or maybe not.
No, he died yesterday.
Oh, he did? Oh, he went really fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm sure there was like a series of. Reasons why they didn't want to transplant, you know, didn't transplant his liver, but. You know, I guess he wasn't on the list for transplant, you know, transplantation. So.
So we are sending, we're sending a peace plant on behalf of the select board and the town hall staff to Val. And when services come, I know that they said, she said you can make donations to. I forget what it was.
Emmy Baker Hospice.
Oh, yeah.
Emmy Baker Hospice. Yep. So when services.
Do a good job.
When services come, you know, we'll get the word out and we'll do something else at that time.
He was at home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just decided to. Set up hospice at the house just last week. Looking toward the long haul.
Kathy, shouldn't we get a plaque maybe? For him, for his service to the town and get it to Val and the family?
I was thinking about that and I thought that we had already given him a plaque when he left the boards.
We could have. I'm not sure.
So, but we can think of something else, you know, in his memory.
Yeah.
We've lost so many people in the last year, it's almost. We almost need a rogues' gallery.
Yeah, it's been a rough one.
Yeah.
Absolutely. It seems like every meeting you're making an announcement, Bill, that somebody else's past is actually sad.
It is very sad.
Yep. Well, it's definitely isn't going going down as a good year. Man.
Life is precious.
Yep.
It's true.
Okay. What else? Something pleasant.
Something pleasant. So if you want to, if you want to think about the select board goals. The sheet that I had passed out some time ago, there was on the sheet, there was. Replacing the tree in front of M&amp;M scoops. Which Joe has been in touch with, I believe the electric co-op said that they had one more tree.
Scott.
So Joe, Scott, so Joe's been in touch with them. To see when they can plant that. So that's going to take care of that one. What happened?
Is that the hydrangea? The hydrangea tree or whatever?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to ask Joe what it is.
Well, similar to what they put in.
The hydrangea?
Yeah, it was, we got reserved five of those, Bill.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're all the same type. It's the. I can't even remember what they call it now. Isn't it a lilac berry?
Yeah, syringia, sorry.
There it is.
Oh, syringia, okay.
And you may want to consider like the remaining trees as well that are, you know, starting to croak anyway, so. You know, that we may may ultimately replace all. And it'd be nice to have the same variety too, I think.
What about Panther Pub? Is that getting replaced too?
Yes, the, I believe the electric company is replacing that one.
Those three down there, the one in front of Sixburner and the the two by the pub and the laundromat. They were all, those were the original trees to be replaced because. One got cut, the other other had storm damage to it. And that's when we found out that those. Types of trees aren't the ones that they recommend for a streetscape just because of the the dirtiness of it. They drop a lot of plums and stuff on people's cars and the birds eat them and they drop their stuff on people's cars. Wasn't very happy making.
And the syringe will only allow birds to perch and drop their stuff on people's cars.
Right, right. They won't be dining in.
Nice. So the other tree is the, well, it was actually the stump that was on the common. It started getting cut down and it stopped and Steve Brand had. Brought it up to me, you know, and I talked to Doug McLean and Doug McLean. Said that he would replace it at no cost to the town. So I sent him a message yesterday to ask him where we were at with that. And he said that. He would be able to replace it next spring, not this year. If we decide to replace it because he's he's saying that. The sunlight that's able to get through and everything, he said it, it just, you know, opens everything up and casts more light and stuff. So. Larry Gibson and I are going to meet with Doug after Larry gets back from. He's away for a few days. So when he gets back, we're going to meet with Doug at that spot and just talk about what would be. You know, the right thing to do there.
Okay.
But so we are looking.
I'm, so Doug McLean, how, what's his relationship with the town? Where am I?
He's just, he's, he's the tree godfather. He's the one that actually has, he replaced or planted a bunch of trees. Yeah, American elms, I guess. I thought there were maples.
No, they're chestnuts.
He did the the Freedom Elms or whatever, the ones that are that are. Blight resistant and then also chestnuts. Was there blight resistant?
Yeah. So, yeah, so he's just, he just wants to help out the town and he's donated a bunch of trees and. When he saw, you know, when he saw the damage done to that one. He said that he would replace that at no cost to the town because it's kind of his baby. So, yeah.
He had years of service on the planning board and conservation commission.
Right.
In the past.
And he's one of the big landlords.
The high school.
Yep.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah. So that's two things, two trees.
The best time to plant a tree is probably in April or May.
Yeah. That's why Doug is thinking of wait until next spring. He said that was the best time to. You know, kind of got away from us with the COVID and stuff, so. I think somebody's cut it to the ground level, though. I thought Doug said he did, but. I haven't looked recently. Do you notice it, Mary Ann?
I I remember, no, I I know the tree where it's been cut, but I can't remember it's been ground to the grind, grind, grinded to the ground.
Grounded to the ground, yeah.
Someone hasn't cut it. I have no idea.
Have you had any report from the tax collector about money coming in?
Um, actually, she, the board signed a paper that extended like. You know, waived interest for 30 days past the due date. Of the tax bill. And she said she hasn't, she's only gotten two requests that I know of. She said that. Like Market Basket has already paid their bill, you know, and a bunch of people have paid already. So, you know, they're doing pretty good.
So we have a 30-day more, we don't have to pay for 30 days beyond July.
Only if you can prove that you can't afford it.
I can give it a shot.
There is a.
Before.
If people can't pay their tax bill by the July, I think it's July 7th, July 8th due date. If they can't pay their bill by that date, they can pay it and get a 30-day waiver on the interest. So. Yeah.
A few weeks ago, Kathy, you told us that Joe wanted us to look at Bartlett Road. I don't.
Yeah, I was gonna ask.
Follow-up conversation on that?
Yes.
Joe was gonna be coming back, I thought, but.
He's coming, yeah, I thought he was going to be here for the work session, but. When I spoke with him a little while ago, I I said, so we'll see at 6 o'clock. So it's probably my fault. But I I thought he was going to be here. Oh, no, he's going to be at the regular meeting to talk about the speed limit signs because. Or to listen and to kind of give his. Input because highway is the one that replaces those signs, so. So he was going to be here for that and he has a couple of purchase orders. Did everybody get to look at Bartlett Road?
Oh, yeah.
So it's in pretty bad shape from what I understand.
It gets a lot of traffic, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, through, they're using it for a cut through from what I understand about that, too.
Yep.
Yeah.
So. A suggestion was made and we haven't talked to Joe about this, but putting it back to gravel, is that what it was? Yeah. Like putting it back to gravel because gravel is much easier to maintain than the paving and potholes and whatnot. You know, kind of making it. Just a road that people would have to travel on lightly, you know, not speed through.
Ledge pack.
Yeah, ledge pack would be great, but if if only they could like grind it and then maybe dig out some of those rocks that are basically pushing through the the asphalt.
Maybe do some. Understand that that roadbed was never properly prepared before they paved it anyway. There's references it to it being a corduroy road. Which I guess is just a log base.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we got logs under there?
Yeah. We found some, we were excavating and we found some logs that were. Over 7,000 years old.
Wow.
We had them carbon tested. So when they're down in the ground and they're in the water table. They can last.
So. Yeah.
Is is there any word on Highland Street Med Bond Bonding Company?
No, not unless Kathy's or anything, but.
Not yet. We're still in. Negotiations, I guess.
Meeting this week.
Oh, that's right. We have a meeting this week to with the with our bond, with the bond company, the Shorty Bond Company.
Oh, neat.
So we'll see what they say. They want to ask the engineer some questions. And they were told that they can't ask the engineer without me and Joe present, so. Joe and I will be there.
Okay. Wow, okay, we got 25 minutes, so.
When they built that road. When they did that project, did they have weekly construction meetings?
For Highland Street?
Yeah, with the town and the engineers.
The town wasn't involved in a weekly meeting. I don't know if the engineers were. I know that Joe was up there, you know, Joe and Maya were up there watching and I believe Mike Vignali as well, watching, you know. Part of it. I don't, that's a question for Joe.
Yeah.
Mary Ann, how's the numbers look?
Which numbers?
You were looking at the numbers on your business, so.
Yeah, not not very good overall, not very good. Yeah.
I see a lot of people eating ice cream down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. You know, June's always been a funky month, but I'm. You know, tourism is, although, gosh, I don't know what tourism's going to look like, I should tell you the truth. But and usually the students will kind of, especially April, May, will start us off early and then when they get back. You know, end of August, September and into October. They carry us through there as well, so. You know, even if they do come back, they'll be encouraged to stay on campus. I don't know if that will work or not. But it will certainly impact our sales. We're toying with the idea of shutting down for the winter. Which have never done before, but so we'll just see. We'll see where we land, like everybody else. Yeah, I'm just happy we're surviving. We're paying the bills and paying the staff. I don't get paid, but that's all right. I I think like most businesses, even though we're open 100%. You know, you still, six feet difference, you're still not going to be, you know, maybe 60% overall and that's not, that's just not enough to make ends meet. Such little margins. We're actually having Jamie, Jamie Polly and I, she owns Simply Sunflowers. Have been working for the past six months on creating a website for Plymouth. Kind of. You know, marketing Plymouth with all our various businesses, but also we have much to offer in Plymouth. You know, entertainment, recreation, there's just tons of stuff that Plymouth Plymouth has to offer. So we will be highlighting that along with all all Plymouth businesses, not just Main Street. Hopefully, hopefully they'll bite on it. We're going to be doing some Zoom meetings over the next few days, so. Hopefully that will help the town overall as well, but we'll see. We'll see where that goes to. Been cool, though. It's been a fun project.
Is the Chamber of Commerce involved?
They are not. They are invited. We actually start the, mostly Main Street businesses started meeting. About seven months ago and, you know, areas like town beautification. You know, South Main Street being dug up. And then I was attracted to the marketing end of it. And so we all, all the businesses that were part of it certainly agreed that we need to figure out a way to better market ourselves. The problem or the challenge is is actually taking that on. It it's, we've spent a lot of time on this. Meeting with SBA, Grafton Regional. Some, some, there's a woman up in Littleton. She's created a website called Go Littleton. And there, she's successfully doing that up there, so lots of information, lots of contact, lots of Zoom meetings. Just to gather all the information, you know, that's even before the website. Designed, so we've created a business, we're partners. And because it even, so the the management of it going forward. You know, keeping it fresh, the content fresh, those type of things, you know. We'll be listing a calendar events and so keeping those things up to date. And once again, you know, getting the word out there, there's some various ways. You know, you can take care of, there's a lot of travel bloggers out there. You can take advantage of that. The Chamber, you know, we're hoping the Chamber at least will put us on their website. We haven't quite officially talked to them. I know they were, they were part of our discussions on the marketing team. They were certainly part of it. And they were very excited about it, but once again. No one really, it's a lot of work, so to take that lead. Designing and then maintaining, you know, is is difficult. So we pro, we talked to Kathy and Jules about it. This was a few months ago, right, Kath? And, you know, our concern in talking to Grafton Regional, they wanted to make sure we spoke to the town. And, you know, we're not speaking as town. Elected officials or town representatives or anything like that. We're just trying to market the town. And there's no, there's no issue with that. We've even been approached by other towns to do similar things. So, you know, it's kind of exciting. We'll see where that leads to us, leads us, but certainly Plymouth is at our heart. So there's no conflict between the official town and this marketing. We, the website is called. Explore New Hampshire, Explore Plymouth, New Hampshire. It's not live yet. We are meeting with business owners to see if they will buy into the project over the next few days. You know, see where that goes. It's been kind of fun.
Mary Ann, if you if you need a calendar tool for that website, let me know. I can probably donate something for you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, absolutely, Zach. Thank you. Anything to make it easier.
Yeah. Are most of the businesses on Main Street members of the Chamber?
I think, I know I haven't been. Once they left Plymouth. There's really no focus at all in Plymouth. I think most Main Street businesses have let it slide. I know there's still some. But I think most feel like I feel, like they weren't really doing anything.
I'm sure that the business school at the university would be interested in working with you.
Well, and that's the, so we've started working with a local photographer, not from PSU, but a local amateur photographer because we felt we were working with locals is important. And, yeah, you know, M&amp;M scoops has worked with marketing and business folks. They do presentations once a year. And so we're definitely going to tap into those resources, even folks that maybe can write some some content, right? Write some information stuff about Quincy Bog. So if people are searching for things to do in Plymouth, you know, here's some really good content about Quincy Bog and such places. So, yeah, a good idea, and we'd be reaching out.
Yeah, we had a. A special. What would you call it, Bill? That, you know, we. Had a declaration that Plymouth was a town for ecotourism.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
And maybe Kathy could show that to you.
Yeah, what does that, what does that mean?
Well, the select board adopted it. It hasn't been adopted by town meeting, but it was. You know, you know, we designated Plymouth as being a center for environmental studies and ecotourism. Because Plymouth has so many attributes in that area. And and it has a long list of things that we have to offer in Plymouth, in the Plymouth area.
So Kath, is that some list that you have that we can tap into or?
Well, it's it's like a proclamation.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I can, yeah, I've got it, so I can.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we're certainly going to reach out to the Conservation Committee to give us some, you know, areas to highlight as well. You know, we have tons of resources here and, you know, honestly, marketing the town. With all its various offerings. It's amazing. It really is. We have a lot to offer here.
We have a university that's out, too.
Well, and so, you know, that's, we on the events, right, we're going to list sports events, including, you know, the PSU events. You know, I, you know, get my fair share in the shop of people asking what's going on and that certainly is one of the areas as well. So we've been really doing a lot of brainstorming, a lot of reaching out to other towns. And like I said, the SBA, folks here at the Enterprise Center. And they've all been, they've all been great. You know, they they really see a need as well. So we're hoping to get on the Chamber of Commerce website. They don't seem to have a lot on there, but they certainly are a good resource.
Great. 15.
Let's.
We have more time?
Yeah, we got more time. I was going to tell you about the fact that, you know, so your domain for Explore Plymouth NH.
Yep.
Nobody's bought it yet, so.
No, so we have, we. No, we bought that. Jamie already bought that. We've, we've. The Explore Plymouth NH on Facebook, Instagram. We've, we've taken all those.
I'm just going to check now, actually.
Shut up, Bill. Get out of there. Jeez, we knew we shouldn't have let the cat out of the bag.
Zach probably already bought the thing, so.
Nice. Well, we've got other, we've, you know, enjoy Plymouth NH. We were going to go off of Go Littleton, so Go Plymouth NH. There was a lot of voting. We reached out to family members to vote and and once again, our our area of their audience. Will not only be tourists, but it will be locals, right? Here's a bunch of services, you know, vets and hairdressers and. You know, here's Spare Memorial if you're in, if you're a tourist and you get hurt. Right? Here's, here's the hospital. And then obviously the PSU students, hopefully they'll use a lot of the Cal, right, trivia night, you know, what's going on in Plymouth, take advantage of that as well. Those are. You know, it, there's a lot and we're trying to, you know, there's only so much you can do at one time. We're actually going to be offering three months free for the businesses, so we'll list, we'll list their business. Logo, point to their websites, add them to Facebook, write ups. And so for three months, we'll offer that free. And kind of show that, you know, through Google Analytics, that people are really accessing it and you really are generating some business off of it. And certainly the more we do, the more hits you get and and things like that, so. We're we're hoping that is in time, right? So three months free, why wouldn't, I would do it. Why wouldn't you do it for free? And then evaluate it at the end of that, so.
That's great.
Yeah, we're trying to figure it out. What do I know? I scoop ice cream. I'm just a kid.
All right, 10 more minutes, actually 12.
Oh, man, there's got to be something.
Shutting down.
Well, okay. Highway, you want to talk about that? The traffic seems to be getting a little more difficult out there.
Yeah, I would attest.
I I think, I I still think we should drop the speed limit between Walmart and. I, I think, I, I still think we should drop the speed limit between Walmart and Dunkin' Donuts to 35. I, I, I don't know. I have to ask the chief again, how he feels about that.
I would tend to agree with you on that, Neil.
But can you or is it?
I don't know. I, we're going to have to go with the state for some reason. There was just, a recent complaint was lodged with the state and the engineer who handles our area called me and we played, we played voicemail tag for a while there. But he complained that some woman got in touch with me about it's not posted enough and I talked to nobody about any of that. But would I entertain lowering the speed limits out there? Yeah, I mean, Neil can remember and I think some of you will remember, we've actually even had a death in there, more than one death.
At least two fatalities.
I think we've had a total of, if I can remember in the last 26 years that I've been here, I think we've had three in that area.
Really?
Yeah, there were two motorcycles. There was, yeah, the, the woman, the bank teller, I think her name was Jessica. Yeah.
There was a girl that got killed in front of the 7-Eleven too.
I thought we were going to count the number of the.
Or in a vehicle?
Pardon?
I'm sorry, two of you were talking. I didn't hear the question.
Go ahead, Bill.
Was it a pedestrian or was it?
She was in a, she was in a pickup truck. And I, I, and she went underneath a flatbed truck.
You know, related but more expensive than, than changing speed limits. I've noticed a lot of people walking, especially since the Market Basket has come into play on Teddy Mountain Highway and I wonder if, at what point do we need to get a sidewalk in?
Zach, actually that even prior to Market Basket, Walmart, all, there are a lot of people that walk that because they live close by. They don't have vehicles, so they either ride bicycles to work or walk to work. But yeah, you do have quite a few people that do that, absolutely.
Yeah, it seems like if we had something either sidewalks and or bike lanes, we might, we might help some of the congestion there too.
So that wouldn't be the town call though, right? Because we don't.
We'd have to push it up to the state.
And they're really efficient, so.
Right.
Be really easy to do.
Get in the right of way, they'd have to.
But I don't know, like what Neil was talking about earlier, you know, being like an eco-friendly type community, we, I don't know if there's any grant money out there for bike lanes because there are a lot of places that are starting to do those kinds of things to reduce, you know, vehicular traffic. That might be an option too, you know, I just don't know where to look for that.
So DT was going to take a look at that, you know, at least the entry to Smith Bridge Road. So they're still kind of involved kind of peripherally, so we still have their attention. And that's the other thing too, regarding those deaths, I mean, I don't think they were aware of that. Right? When we were talking about like a roundabout?
Well, they were, those deaths didn't occur at that specific, they were only interested in that specific intersection.
Right.
The deaths that we were just talking about didn't occur at that, at that.
Yeah, okay.
No, 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 they were scattered. They were, a lot of them were the section that Neil was referring to between the interstate and, and Dunkin' Donuts, that, that, that length. You know, because I think that, you know, it's, we're talking 50 miles an hour through there. You know, and it should probably be reduced. You know, especially with, we are getting a lot of traffic out there, a lot. You know, and then we also have to be cautious with whatever we put at the intersection, you know, Smith Bridge Road, because you, you want to be careful not to do light, 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 then the traffic is going to be backed up on top of each other. And nobody's going to be able to move. You know, I'm not, I'm no engineer. I don't know what the answer to that question is, but somebody will have to answer that question and figure out what the best solution is for that, that intersection. But that's horrible and I hear it all the time and myself included, if I'm at, if I'm at Smith Bridge Road, I never turn left because I know I'm not going to be able to take it. I go right, I pick another parking lot, I turn around and go back the other way because otherwise you are waiting there for an extended period of time before you have the opportunity to make a left-hand turn on at Smith Bridge Road.
Wasn't the state going to do something about counting the number of cars now that we're Market Basket in there, Mike?
There are a count of out there. They, we are looking at it through the Regional Planning Commission. Because it's all 10-year plan stuff, so you know, that's where it starts. And we had tried to identify what steps that we could take first, and that was one of them. I know Juliet's been looking, talking to Mike Vignali, our, our consulting engineer about how best to set that up. But basically you just have somebody with a clicker and a notepad and they say, you know, X number of right turns, X number of laps, you know, how many people have turned in there. And it's, it's all just count data, but they actually need to see how many people are exiting that road, which I guess is kind of the, the key. Turning in there, it doesn't do anything to traffic, but it's trying to get out that, as you know, is the problem.
Is Mike McKinley coming up with his plan for the, the property behind Harris Furniture?
When the way is clear through the state, I know that it's still in DES hands. But, you know, he's already committed to the fact that should that project fail at their level, those conservation easements will remain in the town's hands.
So you're talking about behind Harris Brothers though, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry Neil, I thought you were talking about River.
Yeah.
Nothing has come forward on that other than indications that he had given in the past. Essentially restaurants located by the road, central business area. If you, if you looked at the tax map, that parcel is kind of star shaped. It's really strange. So you have two legs down by the highway, one that you can get in at, the other one was sealed off when they made the turn lane for Highland. So it has presence or vision on the highway, but no access. And just like I said, these are very informal questions that were asked, like how would the town feel? So it's those, the central bigger box area in the center and perhaps a component of housing up in the rear.
Oh yeah, up on the hill.
Right.
Yeah.
So let's keep Town West Road in everyone's mind too, with the bypass that goes out to Walmarts.
Yeah, I think that would have to be part of it.
Yeah, it'd be nice to make sure that we keep considering that.
Jules just texted me and said that they are talking about counts now, but they won't be ready until January.
Wow.
That's at least the text she just gave me.
My goodness.
And just a brief statement, I don't know if it'd be helpful or not, but you know, theoretically I'm, I'm being elected as a commissioner on Lake Region Planning Commission, so.
Wow, hey, that's great.
Yep.
More work.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Maybe that might be useful, I don't know. So. What time do we have? Oh, we got, we got four more minutes. This is like the never ending workshop.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I think we really need a walk light at the traffic light by McDonald's in the bank. But we can't get one until we finish the sidewalk that goes from Burger King out to the intersection.
Yeah.
And, and we need funding and, and that, I think Lake's region might be able to help us with that.
I agree Neil, you definitely need a walk light there. There's, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that likes to cross the road right there.
Yeah, but if you request money though, puts it into, you know, tap and then it's going to be considered for the 2030 decade.
Wow.
You know, that doesn't sound very useful, but there might be other places. Or the border.
That being said, getting, getting on the list for 2030 is better than the list for never.
That's true.
There's a lot on that too.
Is that all your fault, Mary Ann?
It's, that's a long list, I would imagine, the list for never.
Right.
That's why my staff asked me for a raise and I tell them that's on the list for never.
Exactly.